Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Alton County Council. It is Tuesday, September the 24th, 2024, 9:00 AM, and I will call this meeting to order. The first order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on September 10th, 2024 be adopted.
The minutes have been circulated. Any errors or omissions? Otherwise, I see Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Hens willing to move in second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. I would remind all members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seen none. Brings us to Section 4, Presenting Petitions, Presentations, and Delegations. This morning, I'm pleased to welcome Amy Martin, Mayor Amy Martin, Chair of the Board of Directors of the South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation, and Kimberly Earls, the Executive Director of SCORE, to give an interim member update. So please welcome to the podium. You'll have to press the button on the mic to get it going, and then please proceed.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having us. We have a presentation. I'll just wait for it to be uploaded. So thank you for the introduction, Warden Amy Martin. I'm the mayor of Norfolk County, and I am the Chair currently for SCORE. And Kim and I had a great conversation and thought we'd better make an effort to touch base with our partners outside of budget when we're just asking you for that membership fee. And it was a really great exercise for us to go through and look over the work that SCORE has been able to accomplish, not only in the last recent years, but really the last decade. So we'd like to bring some of that to your attention and have a great discussion with you about all things SCORE and the regional mandate that we've been working on. Next slide, please. So as you well know, Norfolk County of Brandt, Oxford County, Middlesex, and Elgin come together, and it's a regional approach where we go to the government and work on economic development initiatives that will benefit the entire region. Next slide. SCORE was created in 2010, and we quite often reference that it came about with the decline of the tobacco industry across all of our partner counties, but really it could have been anything that brought us all together. And I think the beautiful thing is that we work together and we focus joint priorities on advancing what's best for all of our communities. Next slide. So our priorities are set by each new board, and we have been focusing on infrastructure required to support economic development, certainly on human capital to support economic development. And then the key sector focus is on agriculture and agro-food. Next slide. And this is a slide that just kind of breaks down some of the work that we're doing, the Resource Advisory Committee, and how it flowed through our Board of Directors through Kim to the various projects and committees that she works on. It demonstrates a bit of our reach and outreach into the communities. Next slide. One of our important messages that I know everybody knows, but we'd like to reiterate is that really for a very reasonable membership price, we come together and we are right-sized. This one-in-five approach where the regions work together. And we're going to get into a little bit with our slides, but we'd like to just remind you and emphasize the benefit of a very small membership price, and we'll demonstrate that with some numbers shortly. Next slide. And your SCORE representatives. Next slide. So we're going to start off by talking about one of our bigger initiatives that we've been successful on and working on for many, many years, which is the transit. So we know that connecting all of our communities puts together about 21,000 square kilometres of land, and we have a reach of millions of community members that are eligible to participate in transit. One of the things that we think is pretty interesting is that 375,000 of those community members are over the age of 65, and over 200,000 of those community members are low-income. So as we advocate to the government for support, for funding, to, you know, really focus our attention on our rural communities, transit's something that a lot of the urban centres have and probably take for granted, and this is something that we've been really proud, and the government has looked to SCORE to be a partner when it comes to rural transit. In 2021, we started off with ridership of 38,000 and change. 2023 ridership up was 119,000, and between 2021 and 2023, there's an increase of 41%. I can't remember our number at the bottom there. It's covered off with your 84, 84,000 by June of this year. So we're certainly set to exceed the ridership numbers from both years. So the program is a success. People are using it, and it's growing each and every year. Next slide. Is this our updated map? Okay, this map's demonstrating the connectivity through the ridership of ACT. Next slide. So some relationships and collaborations. We keep very busy all year long with ministers' meetings. And as I said, the ministry looks to SCORE to talk about rural transit as an example of practices. Next slide. I'm going to pass it over to Kim to talk about a couple really important projects, shortline rail and a few others.
Thank you, and thanks everyone for having us here. So shortline rail is of particular importance here in Elgin. Certainly, some of you may remember the decline of the rail industry in general in the region back around 2010, 2011. And in 2016, they actually were looking to decommission the shortline rail. And SCORE was the lead organisation in reinstituting that rail, along with GeoRail and US County Partners. And the importance of that is that rail serves the agricultural sector. And in particular here in Elgin, it is instrumental in serving the IGCP plant, which, as you know, is a major employer in Elmer and across the county. And it also serves as a manufacturing infrastructure piece. So it runs between Portland in Norfolk County, the southern part of Oxford County through Elgin, and into just the east end of St. Thomas here, and actually it butts the new PowerCo facilities. So that line gives us a lot of supports and investment attraction leverage for other manufacturers across the region. And so that is one of the things, those larger infrastructure pieces that take some time, that SCORE focuses on, that you provide us that strategic direction so that we have a great region. And again, those kinds of infrastructure pieces are instrumental in why people come to the area and why this is such a great area to invest in. Next slide, please. And this is just a little map, kind of going through our, we did a economic impact study before the PowerCo. We have not refreshed that, which we need to. So there was quite an impact even then. Now it's significantly more. And so that just demonstrates one piece of the infrastructure supports that rail offers. Next slide, please. I'll talk a little bit about energy, and then I'll pass it over. So one of the other issues, that's a larger issue that we, again, some of you probably were on instrumental in getting this advocacy work done, was the expansion of the natural gas programme to serve agriculture and manufacturing, and that was back in 2016. And again, SCORE was a leader in that. And then we've sort of taken that a little further. This last year or two, we've done some advocacy work on other energy projects, and I will let, I think housing is next. Okay, so we've, we're looking at that larger energy profile as well. Next slide, please. And so just, I wanted to demonstrate that also SCORE is a collaborative partner for other partnerships across the region. So while we do do a lot of direct economic development activity ourselves, some of our activity is recognizing that other organisations, such as the Rural Ontario Institute, which we've partnered with many times, requires our support in creating things that are beneficial for this area. And this was an instance for this. This is not a SCORE-led project, but this was a project that Rural Ontario Institute created and SCORE supported, which is the Rural Housing Information System. And it is a development tool specifically for planners and social services departments within the counties to be able to attract different types of housing development and look for tools to provide appropriate housing opportunities within our region. Next slide, please. And these are just some of the projects and initiatives that we work on. So I'll just really quickly explain them. The agricultural sector, kind of self-explanatory. The Supply Chain Resilience Project is really looking towards connecting our infrastructure, ensuring that current businesses that are here have opportunities to grow if they wish to, and in attracting new investment when and where that's appropriate. And the big piece of that, which is kind of the resilience part, is ensuring that we have a strong workforce and sort of insulating the businesses that are already here to prepare themselves for some turnover that may happen because of these larger investments. Next slide, please. And with that, I will turn it back a little bit.
Like I said, Kim keeps us very busy with AMO and Roma delegations, lots of ministry discussions throughout the year, but recently we headed off to Queen's Park. We were invited to speak to the Standing Committee on the Interior with regards to Bill 165, and that was on the lead to construct. So we were successfully able to pitch the government to make an amendment on the dollar value that essentially Ontario and Ontario businesses in our region are expected to put in the ground. It triggers a threshold, and it costs them far more than any other province to invest in. And we have examples of countless businesses that chose to not invest within our region, and some of them even went out of Canada to the States. So that was an initiative that Kim caught and added into our advocacy packages, and we went to Queen's Park and successfully lobbied for that amendment. Next slide. Lots of intergovernmental meetings, and as I said, the conferences ongoing all the time. Next slide, please. Long-term strategic planning, that is something that each board participates in, and we're always looking at what government funding envelopes are open, what common threads are happening through our municipal partners so that we can attract and leverage dollars that will benefit all of us long-term. Next slide. So this is where we talk a little bit about the value of the partnership. We have one senior staff member who's running the ship here for us, Kim. But together, we have, you know, the $30,000 in a membership is comparable to several other FTE positions that we've taken a look at across other municipalities. So there are 18 other staff in neighbouring municipalities that contribute to the work that SCORE puts forward to the benefit of all of us. We have nine other elected officials. We have Kim, and then we have two other part-time staff members that join SCORE. So all of that collectively, what's our grand total here, Kim?
We are just shy of a million dollars worth of staff time for 30,000.
So a million dollars in staff time, just shy of that for your $30,000 membership price. Next slide. And that's all we have for you today. We're available to answer any questions, but I guess in summary, I'd just like to remind you all to lean into your SCORE partners that you have here around the table, bring any priorities forward that you'd like for us to be made aware of. As we do our advocacy work, we are more than happy to lean into very specific examples in your community, what's happening, and leverage that if it is applicable to the other regions. And we have an amazing resource here of Kim and your staff partners working together through all the other municipalities and those various committees they sit on. So it's a really great opportunity, and I've really enjoyed working with Kim and Warden Ketchabaw over the last year as Chair. SCORE is a great resource that we can all definitely maximize and use a bit more than we have been. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And I think it's timely that it is out as an interim and gives the opportunity for council members to consider the ongoing work and helps prepare them if they have any questions, particularly when it comes to budget that may need to be addressed. One thing I want to include in your presentation is an observation over the last AMO conference, and it's been coming for the last couple of years through various other conferences, whether it be Roma, Good Roads, or wherever else SCORE has been. Good to know that we're reading and recorded now. Anyway, it became more and more prevalent. I guess that wasn't appropriate.
Safe to say, we can't take this as a video to other municipal partners, I guess.
Yeah, apparently not. But any time that, particularly at AMO, I had the opportunity to sit before a minister. And when we were discussing various issues, whether it be transit or anything, energy, didn't matter. The minister's eyes lit right up and took note when we talked about collaboration across the regions. The ministries and the provinces looking for collaboration. They're not looking for one-offs. They're looking for a larger piece, and I think SCORE is the right size that fits in, and they have an expectation that SCORE is, you know, with a reach of over a million people, geographic size about the city of Metro, that it has a larger impact and they can get a bigger bang for their buck. And I think you undersell yourself, Kim, very much, the fact that the amount of money and that the organisation is able to leverage from federal provincial resources in order to move the issues forward. So I think it's very key, and I think it's something that perhaps there'll be some questions around the table, trying to get a better sense on that particular nugget. But anyway, I'm going to open up the council members. Does anyone have any questions for our SCORE individuals? Counselor Sloan?
Thank you very much. And just a quick question through you, Warden. You've talked about rail and energy. If it's specific to Elgin County, what would you say the biggest contribution SCORE has made in the last year or so to the residents here in respect to what you're focusing on and how it would affect the average Elgin County resident?
Thanks for the question. Through you, Warden, to Counselor Sloan. For me, I don't think that in the last year, we have a project that we're delivering with a bow on it to each and every one of your communities, but I would echo the comments from Warden Ketchabaw. The advocacy is unparalleled to anything else that we're doing, and the government is leaning into that Rural Ontario focus, maybe because they're leading up to an election, maybe because they realise the value is there. And so the advocacy alone and the follow-up that I know comes through to Kim after the conferences on things like shortline, on things like infrastructure lead to construct, education, the amount of time we get with the minister and the minister's staff on education in all of our communities is probably one of the top portfolios that I know Kim spends a lot of time on outside of conferences. So for me, the answer is advocacy. I don't have a specific project that I would, you know, put a bow on that we've delivered for Elgin in the last 365 days, but.
Yep, please. I would say for Elgin, probably the most obvious is the shortline rail. It goes through, in particular in Elmer, the new business park created there, and then it goes through the rest of the county along that line to St. Thomas. And again, that rail infrastructure was instrumental in attracting a lot of the investment that we have attracted. And I neglected to say in our presentation, Carolyn Cron is our Chair of our Resource Advisory Committee. So that's all the ministers and the other economic development staff. And, you know, thanks to her leadership, we've really had a focus on those regional issues like rail, like, you know, understanding what is specifically happening in Elgin. For instance, the business park supports and the agricultural support. So I think there are some really specific takeaways, the, and I don't want to go on too long, but I think the difficulty with SCORE from a council point of view is our mandate is to look at those larger regional issues that take a significant amount of time to really see some activity on. But then when we've finally reached that point of success, that's kind of that fulcrum point that really attracts and leverages all that time and effort that's gone before it, so.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks, Kim. I appreciate the rail. That is important, and thanks for clarifying. I have something that's sort of tangible I can run with, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Amy or Kim. Very good report. Thank you very much, and certainly second the Warden's comments and collaboration and the importance of that. What would you say is the biggest roadblock in moving transit east to west rather than north to south, especially in terms of PowerCo? And you're talking about St. Thomas being now a kind of health hub for those people who don't have doctors. There's a lot of people that need that kind of transit. So what is the roadblock? It seems logical to move east to west.
So just to make sure that I'm answering, so are you speaking about sort of inter-community transit, Counselor Cookett?
Yes, I'm talking about for a simple thing like a bus route from the east of the county to the west of the county.
I would say through SCORE, we've been able to serve parts of Norfolk County. So in particular, right now, Middlesex County is a member of ACT that was funded through the Community Transportation Pilot Grant Programme, which SCORE Board of Directors got that 250 million for the province. And right now, they're going from Dorchester, South Middle, South London into St. Thomas and down into Southwalt to the Amazon Plant. There is some service into Bayham. That gap in for the rest of Elgin is honestly an issue and something, again, we've been working with Carolyn, the other Resource Advisory Group team. And I guess honestly, the biggest holdup is the uncertainty around if the province is going to continue to support rural transit past March 2025. Right now, we're all operating on sort of a a pilot, which was fantastic, except for the funding was announced at the beginning of a pandemic, and so we were, had some setbacks there. But I think once there is some certainty as to what the provincial funding will be and maybe what that federal level of funding will be, we hopefully can fill the gaps across the entire region. So hopefully that answers some of that.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess I wasn't aware that the funding would stop in March of 2025. And so obviously, you're advocating to continue the fund. And along with that, to advocate that east-west route, especially to St. Thomas. Right, thank.
Through the Chair further to that, actually, there should be a motion before your council eventually that SCORE is drafted, and we've shared with all of our municipal partners to advance the advocacy on the funding past the March 2025 date.
Yes, Kim, you either added or I was going to.
So sorry. I also, just to your question, Counselor Cookett, is right now also ACT is planning for the eventuality, which is a SCORE project. We are planning for the eventuality that maybe the province doesn't fund us individually. And so we are looking at what a centralised transit agency might look like and what might be the the ability for us to attract that funding. And in that case, if we're looking at centralised operations, definitely Elgin is a main destination that is currently maybe a little underserved.
Okay, if I can add in one more piece, Counselor Cookett. In my mind, the biggest hurdle is that the current funding model doesn't recognise rural transit systems per se because of the distance travelled, and that is something that SCORE has been working with the ministry, trying to get an amendment so that a new funding model, whether it be through gas tax, former gas tax programme, whatever they call it now, to recognise not just density of population, meaning the number of ridership, but also the distance travelled. It's greater in rural areas than it is in urban areas. So that's something that is an impediment to a rural transit system. And I know that that's been a discussion that SCORE has had around the table for quite some time and something that we've carried forward to the various ministries. Just throwing it out there. Anything else from any other member? Of course, I'm practising because I have to pinch-hit for Kim this afternoon in Middlesex. Great. Well, thank you again very much for attending this morning, and I look forward to joining you later on in Middlesex. Catherine, please.
Resolved that the presentation from the SCORE EDC Executive Director and the Chair of the Board of Directors be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and sec? Counselor Noble and Counselor Cookett will second. All in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Section 5, Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
Mover and sec, please. Counselor Hens and Counselor Sloan, all in favour? That's carried. Section 6, Reports of Council Outside Boards and Staff. 6.1, we have the Manager of Emergency Management and the Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School, Legacy Wells Application Years 2 and 3. Good morning, Andrea.
Morning, Mr. Warden and Council. This morning, I want to speak to you about the Year 2 and 3 Legacy Wells Transfer Payment Programme, which might seem a little deja vu because we were just here not long ago talking about it back in August. So for Year 2 and 3, just as a quick reminder, we do have two streams of funding provided through the M&amp;RF, base funding of up to 280,000 for each participating municipality, and then collaborative funding, which is available to municipalities who are participating in collaborative projects, 1.5 million in Year 2 and 1 million in Year 3. Through meetings with M&amp;RF and the participating municipalities, it has been suggested that there is additional funding possible for Year 2. Although that has not been yet confirmed, they are moving in that direction in terms of planning. In the project that we have put forward is for the training ground, training equipment that we spoke about in August. Eight of the other eight participating municipalities have worked together to submit a collaborative project for emergency response trailers. So one per municipality over the next two years. And while this was of great importance to Elgin County, and I did have these conversations with our lower tiers, it was prioritised as our second priority, whereas the training equipment was our first priority. And so we have put forward the application, as mentioned, for the training ground. Recently, I had communication with Catherine Baker from M&amp;RF, and it was, it was expressed that the M&amp;RF does not want to miss out on the opportunity to enhance emergency response in the capacity of an emergency response trailer. And it was expressed that while they, like our initial application, there is interest in Elgin County participating in both the emergency response trailer collaborative proposal as well as the training proposal that we initially put forward. And so through those discussions, it was expressed that the training ground was our top priority, and it was, we were reassured that it is not an "or" type of application. It is a, they want to gauge our interest in submitting an additional application, and they are supportive of both applications. The collaborative project currently led by Brandt County is for the acquisition of an emergency response trailer. And there would be some purchased in Year 2, and then others purchased in Year 3. They do need to fit one of the three approved configurations by M&amp;RF, and that is decontamination, mass triage, or casualty, or unified command. Through discussions with our fire chiefs, our lower-tier fire chiefs, they showed overwhelming interest that it would serve the needs of all the fire services across the county to move forward with the decontamination trailer if it was supported by council. Given that during our initial discussions, it was, like as I mentioned, it was our second priority. The ability to submit the second application to allow for both the training equipment and the emergency response decontamination trailer would significantly improve Elgin County's capacity and ability to respond to legacy oil and gas wells and other hazardous material incidents. And it has been, as I mentioned, I want to sort of reassure, has been confirmed with M&amp;RF that it is a second submission, that they are in support of both submissions. It is not one or the other, and we're just looking for council's support to put that application forward.
All right, thank you, Andrea, for that. Does anyone have any questions? Any concerns? Deputy Warden?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just to comment, I think this is a great step, and it's definitely, if we can pull this off, it's definitely going to be a feather in our hat.
Yep, absolutely. I agree with you. Anyone else? Again, I think it presents a tremendous opportunity from a collaborative point of view of able to. Again, I think it presents a tremendous opportunity from a collaborative point of view of able to equip our local municipal partners with the resourcing should the need ever arise. And this is a great way to do it. Otherwise, we'd have to fund this ourselves at the local level. So. Being nothing else, Catherine, please.
Resolved that approval be granted for submission of a second application for M and RF's Legacy Wells Municipal Transfer Payment Program, Year Two and Three Collaborative Funding.
Mover and second, Counselor Widner. Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Andrea. Six two, Director of Community and Cultural Services, the Elgin County Heritage Center Seasonal Hours of Operation. Good morning, Brian.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Warden and through you to council. This report is seeking County Council's approval to adjust the public open hours at the Elgin County Heritage Center on a seasonal basis and based on the recommendation of the Elgin County Museum Advisory Committee, of which we have Councillors Jiguer and Hince as members. Happy to answer any questions council might have.
Well, thank you very much for that short report, Brian. Does anyone have any comments or concerns? I would assume, Brian, that should a special event come up, someone wants they could make arrangements to have a weekend visit.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. That's why the flexibility in terms of being able to, you know, adjust hours both. Should there need to be a temporary closure, but more importantly, if we have a special event on a weekend, I think we would accommodate it certainly.
Thank you very much for that. Anyone else? Okay. Catherine, please.
Resolved that the Elgin County Heritage Center's public open hours be revised as follows on an annual basis effective immediately. May 1st to Thanksgiving Weekend, Tuesday to Saturday, 10 o'clock AM to 4 o'clock PM. Thanksgiving Weekend, April 30th, Monday to Friday, 10 o'clock AM to 4 o'clock PM. And that the museum curator be further authorized to adjust public open hours on a temporary basis, subject to public notice and approval of the Director of Community and Cultural Services.
Do we have a mover and second for that? Counselor Latham? Counselor Noble. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six point three, Director of Planning and Development, the proposed provincial planning statement official plan modifications. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. We adopted our new official plan in May of this year, and it has since been with the Municipal Affairs and Housing for review. Most recently, the provincial planning statement for 2024 was released. The implementation of that statement is going to happen October 20th. So there's an interesting time period window here where the province is still reviewing our official plan. They have not approved it just yet. We are hoping to go through this conformity exercise to make modifications to our adopted official plan to include those changes from the 2023 draft PPS. The differences between the 2023 and the 2024 into our now adopted official plan. The details of those changes are in the report. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for that report, Matt. Does anyone have any changes? There are a number here to go through. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Lots of concerns, but yeah. Please.
Resolved that the report titled Proposed Provincial Planning Statement Official Plan Modifications from the Director of Planning and Development, dated September 24th, 2024, be received and filed and that council endorses the proposed modifications to the adopted Elgin County Official Plan and directs staff to forward said modifications to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing for his consideration when approving the official plan.
Do we have a mover and second for that? Counselor Hens? Excuse me, Counselor Cookett? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to six point four, from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, participation in the regional economic development through the immigration ready pilot. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to council, the Ontario Ministry of Labor Immigration Training and Skills Development invited Elgin County to apply to the Ontario Immigrant Nominee Program's New Regionalization Initiative. This initiative aims to help communities and businesses attract and retain foreign talent to fill local labor shortages within selected communities. Building on the success of a similar 2020 pilot, the initiative aims to facilitate collaboration between regional partners and employers to fill labor gaps. It sets aside nomination spaces for skilled foreign workers under the employer job offer streams. So each participating communities are guaranteed a specific number of spots in that program. These workers must have job offers from employers in participating communities and will have a pathway to permanent residence in Ontario. Communities involved in the program must play an active role in promoting the pilot, vetting employers and supporting the integration of newcomers. The pilot officially launches on January 2nd of 2025 and will run for one year. Selected communities invited based on demonstrated local labor shortages were required to submit an expression of interest by September 6th, with the selection process concluding by the end of September. Although the program offers valuable support to employers in communities, no direct funding will be provided to to the participating regions. Instead, communities must use their own resources to fulfill the program's obligations. So due to the quick turnaround time from receiving the invitation to the application deadline, staff reached out to the ministry to ask for an opportunity to discuss the opportunity with council. The ministry responded that staff could complete the application conditional on council's approval. As mentioned, the ministry would like to announce the selected communities at the end of the month. Our recent business retention and expansion survey indicated that businesses, particularly in the manufacturing sector, need help with recruitment and retention. Local employers have expressed concerns that new developments such as the PowerCo Gigafactory will intensify these challenges. Therefore, we thought that this opportunity was worth exploring and discussing with council. Staff also reached out to Chatham Kent to discuss their participation in the 2020 pilot. Their experience was fairly positive and they said that they would recommend any communities who had the opportunity to participate because it really elevated their brand and it helped them attract new residents and it really created some excitement in the community as well. They did note, however, that the program requires a significant amount of staff resources to support employers throughout the process and to respond to interested immigrants who would like to come to the community. They did establish a dedicated email address and I think the day that the program was announced, they had 200 emails in that inbox. So they did do a personalized response to each and every one of those emails. We certainly could discuss strategies for managing that as well. So there is a significant amount of interest in this program. So staff would need to support the process from finding employers willing to participate, vetting employers, working with settlement services and reporting on performance. While this is a great opportunity for local employers to fill job vacancies, there are also some challenges to consider. So there are two specific challenges that I'd like to highlight. So again, there may be some challenges in settling immigrants in rural areas. So to address that collaboration with community organizations will be essential to address issues such as housing availability and transportation to employment sites. So I reached out to the YWCA who offers settlement services and they indicated that they would be happy to support and offer wraparound services like they do. They are our settlement, one of our settlement agencies in the county. So the other challenge is staff resources. Implementing this program would require dedicated staff resources to do the employer outreach to coordinate with settlement services to answer questions, et cetera. So we cannot support this program with a current staffing complement without redirecting staff from their regular duties. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. Questions? Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Carolyn. So obviously they're saying staff time is going to be critical to make this success. Do they have any indication just how much time that's going to be? Because there is a cost and is it, do we have to hire somebody else? Or I guess that's my first question. The second question is housing. We already have a shortage of housing and if we step into this program, are we required to find housing for our immigration? Is that something that's part of our responsibility? Or is it just they go out and find their own house or apartment?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Through the Warden to you. So I can answer the first question about housing. The employer is responsible for finding housing. So it's not the county's responsibility, but it is the employer's responsibility to find housing and transportation. The second question regarding staff time. Chatham Kent has a resident attraction department and they did before they participated in this particular pilot and it did take one of their staff members' time for the year to do now. That may vary. They did recommend instead of personalized responses to each and every inquiry, having some ready to go responses. So there certainly are ways that we could scale this, but again, it would be beyond what we currently have capacity to do without redirecting our energies away from the projects that we are currently working on.
Counselor Jiguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. So obviously it sounds like you need an answer before we have an opportunity for budget deliberation. So what happens if through budget deliberations and we find out we have and through strategic planning as well, that we find out we have other strategies or other priorities and we can't afford the staffing. So can can it be a conditional application? Can we pull out? After we've applied? What are your thoughts on that? I'm also curious why it's called the pilot? So is there an expectation? Is this something that you get to try and then after that you run on your own and and you have to assume all of the resources once you got started? If you could clarify those two points, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Jiguer. So my understanding is that it's called a pilot because they're piloting an approach to targeting specific municipalities for the Ontario Immigration Nominee Program. So beyond the one year, there is no commitment. Now, Chatham Kent did recommend you have the one year program. It mobilizes the community. You're getting a lot of support. You're getting a lot of different partners working together to support newcomers. And they did say when that program leaves, you need to keep up that work if you want to continue with that initiative. And so that can take continued effort. However, there is no obligation to do so, but they did mention it was great for mobilizing the forces and it gave community members something to rally behind and really sink their teeth into. So again, it's piloting an approach to targeting specific communities for the Immigration Nominee Program. With respect to whether or not we can say no later on, I can certainly ask the ministry that. My understanding was they would want a firm answer from from us.
Counselor Jiguer.
Thank you. Just a quick follow up. So this, should I understand from this that there could be an opportunity next year? In other words, it sounds like it's being offered through different on an ongoing basis. And if that's the case, do you see any downside to us taking the time to complete the strategic plan and also complete? I would expect at some point we'll see an economic development strategy so you can identify for us what your goals are and where best to invest. Is it in staffing? Is it in this program? Or are there, I mean, there are so many other opportunities and programs. So in other words, what would be your thoughts on applying next year instead?
I certainly would like to do a strategic plan for economic development and it would be great to have that to guide our decision making.
I'm going to throw two cents out there and I'll tackle that last one. I think from an optics point of view with the the investment that's going on in the region and the fact that the province has kind of invited us to go and do this. Do we have a risk from that perspective by not accepting the invitation? Just something for council consideration. Yep, Deputy Warden Jones.
Thanks, Warden. Yeah, I get where you're coming from. I'm not sure if we're ready. There's a lot of things we aren't quite ready for in master transportation and everything. We're just, we have so many things in the works right now. Is it something, is it just one more thing that's going to muddy the water, I guess?
I agree. And but I just threw that out there just because of there's a lot in play at the moment and a lot of uncertainty. And that's I don't know. We have investment coming to the region. We recognize that a lot of these jobs aren't going to be actually up and going until 27, possibly. Oh, anyway. And it could be long term after that. And I, I, part that bothers me about it is we're invited to participate, but we don't have a funding source to help offset it. And that's the one challenge right there. Any thoughts on that, Blaine? Is there something that through your connections you might dig into a little more and?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of thoughts and certainly a challenging topic and decision for council because I completely agree. I think the ideally if the county were to be able to pick the timing, then perhaps a year from now would be more appropriate. Given a couple of things and Counselor Jiguer mentioned strategic plan, Ms. Cron mentioned discussions that her and I have had with respect to something that council will be seeing in the in the business planning framework, a undertaking an economic development strategy next year, because I believe our current strategy actually comes to an end fairly soon. So that would certainly help guide a lot of our efforts in in that area. My challenge and I think what council is being challenged with is you are invited to participate in this. This is not something that we've reached out for. This is an invitation that we've received. Will we be invited again next year? That's something that we can certainly ask if, you know, recognizing you know, the situation that the county is in or its point in time and its evolution. So if council, you know, deems it more appropriate, then we can certainly ask the province if we can essentially delay our participation a year. We can certainly follow up with the province on that.
You know, actually that I think is probably more prudent, given the fact that a lot of the jobs in this region are going, there is a shortage right now. We know there's job openings within the the London, St. Thomas, Elgin region. But more of that is going to become more and more relevant once they get some of these plants up and running or looking to hire. I'm not sure it's going to happen in 25, but I do think maybe 26, 27. Is that more coincide with when the need is going to be? So there's an argument there for perhaps delaying a year if it's, if the inviteers are willing to do that. Any other thoughts? I'm just throwing it out there, being devil's devil's advocate. Counselor Jiguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So yes, I appreciate that we're invited, but I think there's a, there's a strategic and diplomatic way of, because I just want to clarify that we're, it's like someone saying, I would like you to host a dinner party. So it's at your house, it's on your cost and you know, I'll provide the the menu ideas. And I mean, yes, it's an invitation, but with a lot of expectations. So I think there's a way to craft a response that acknowledges the value of the program, the fact that we want to be ready to honor, you know, the the framework of the program and the deliverables. And so we just need a little bit more time. And so I think there's, I would be in favor of accepting the invitation, saying we're honored, we want to be ready. Can we negotiate timeline, so to speak?
If, from a process point of view, we asked staff to go back and address these issues with the, through the invitation, would they be willing to defer, you know, at least? at least till give us an opportunity to further discuss this in October? So you know, I'm getting at Blaine. Like, I'm sensing that there's perhaps a thought around the table of, yes, we'd like to do this, but we're not really ready to do it. We're not in a position to do it yet.
Through you, Mr. Warden, there's one clarification. Because it's, I can certainly appreciate some of the concerns with respect to competing challenges or competing initiatives. Are we asking them to? We will provide a formal decision at a later point in time because council wishes to discuss some of those other initiatives? Or are we accepting their invitation and just deferring the timelines as to when we're going to start? Those are two very different things. And one will be looked on, I think, in favor. One probably will not.
That's the point. It comes down to optics again. At the same time, Carolyn, I think there was a request out there to find out what is our perhaps drop dead opt-out date? Should we even go through the application?
Through you, Mr. Warden. The deadline is September 30th. That is when they want to make the announcement.
Yep. What do you think, council? Do you want to accept, see if they'll defer for a year? Because it does commit us to resources. Counsel, Deputy Warden Jones.
I think that's something I could live with.
Counsel Winder. I'm seeing some nods. Very diplomatic suggestion. Thank you. Blaine, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. And Ms. Cron mentioned this in some of her commentary, that we learned a great deal through the discussion with the people at Chatham Kent. So a huge thank you to them for taking the time to discuss things with us. There are, I think, a couple of things that we learned there where we could streamline the process. So I'm not sure that we would be looking at quite the same level of resourcing that they would look, that they looked at. Ms. Cron mentioned, you know, personal responses to each of the several hundred emails. Perhaps there's a streamlined approach that we can take to that. Balancing that, of course, that we are trying to fit people with potential employers. There is a significant impact on their life. And a personal touch, I think, is required when we're actually dealing with folks and trying to, you know, establish their life here in the county for them to, you know, grow their families and expand their careers and things like that. So, but I think we could balance that off. So that additional time, I think, could also be beneficial for us to learn a little bit more and analyze just what the approach would be with that best balanced approach and what our resourcing would look like.
Right. We can't defer or say, because you need an answer for the end of the month. But you can defer. I apologize. What I meant was if you want to move the issue along, we need to make a decision. If you wish to defer effectively, I would think that that would boat it down. All right, the last I got around the table was a sense of accepting, except deferring implementation, if that's possible. At least if signals were willing to work with them. Have you got something, Catherine, that will work? We'll see.
Resolved that the report titled "Participation in the Regional Economic Development Through Immigration Pilot from the Manager of Economic Development, Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, dated September 24, 2024, be received and filed, and that council supports an application to participate in the regional economic development through immigration pilot, and that council direct staff to investigate the possibility of delaying participation in the regional economic development through immigration pilot for a year's time."
I think it commits us to the next year with, you know, just a caveat that staff could explore it. That's all it is, but it still commits us. I think, I'm not sure that's what council's implying. I think council would like to accept the invitation, but defer implementing for a year. It's complicated, yes, you're right. Have I read the council right? Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it would be to defer the decision as opposed to saying, yes, but we'll implement it later. Because I don't think, I prefer to make informed decisions. This, we don't have all the information. We need to make a solid commitment.
We don't. We don't. And I think what we're doing is dancing on the issue of how do we further down the road, load down.
To consider this invitation upon further review of our internal capacity.
Along that line, yes.
I think there'll be other programs. This is, I don't think it's a, there are other ways, I think, to achieve. Because I'm not denying the goal. I think the message was loud and clear in the great report we got from the BRNE. So I think the data's there. But this is just one solution I feel like that would be jumping fairly quickly and not a full opportunity to strategize on all of the ways that we can invest our resources to respond to the BRNE study.
So essentially, the messaging then is while we may be interested, we're not in a position yet to accept. How's that play from a staff perspective?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think that we can certainly convey that message back. I don't think it's a situation where a decision can be deferred or be put off. The province has invited the county to participate. If the county's not in a position to do that now or make a decision on that now, then we have to respectfully decline, however, express our interest in the program and our support of the program. And we'd certainly be willing to consider it at a future date.
I believe that's the position that I'm hearing. Consensus from around council. Okay. Let's try it again.
Resolved that the report titled "Participation in the Regional Economic Development Through Immigration Pilot from the Manager of Economic Development, Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, dated September 24, 2024, be received and filed, and that the county respectfully decline the invitation to participate in the regional economic development through immigration pilot program and express interest in participation at a later time."
I think, okay. Excuse me. We'll leave it up to a scribe, a better wordsmith, to put that together for a letter. But I think it conveys the intention of council. Okay, moved by Counselor Shiger, seconded by Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? Okay, that is carried. Thank you. We are going to recess now so we can go out and wash our hair at the Heritage Center for a proclamation. They have a flag, I assume?
We do.
Okay, so we stand recessed. Okay. Welcome back. We left off at section 6.5. Manager of Economic Development, Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, the Community Safety and Policing Act, the OPP Detachment Board Transition. Carolyn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. As you know, the Community Safety and Policing Act came into effect on April 1st. It replaces the former Police Services Act, bringing with it a new framework for OPP detachment boards across Ontario. This new legislation significantly changes how OPP detachment boards operate by creating a clear separation between the board and local municipal councils. To provide some context, since 2001, six municipalities in Elgin County, Bayham, Malahide, Central Elgin, South Old Dutton-Dunwich, and West Elgin, have worked under a unified agreement with the OPP. This led to the creation of the Elgin Group Police Services Board, which has been in place since that time, 2001. Throughout this time, Elgin County has played a key role in administering the board's activities, handling everything from billing for police services to preparing agendas, minutes correspondence, and grant applications. While the county received a small honorarium for these services, we also have provided extensive in-kind support, which helped ensure the board's smooth operation. With the implementation of the Community Safety and Policing Act, this arrangement has ended, and the new detachment board is now expected to operate independently under the framework of the new legislation. So under the CSPA, the new OPP detachment board has several responsibilities. These include consulting with the OPP Commissioner on the selection of a detachment commander, setting objectives and priorities for policing in our region, monitoring the performance of the detachment commander, and providing annual reports to all of the participating municipalities. The board's relationship with council will be more arms-length moving forward. And the board will also need to ensure compliance with regulations and maintain the community safety and well-being plans for our region. So originally, our local municipalities, the CAOs, met. We discussed the new OPP detachment boards, and we agreed to wait to schedule that first board meeting until the two provincial appointees were named. It has been taking quite some time. So I reached out to the ministry recently to figure out when can we find out about these appointees? And they indicated that we will likely not find out before the end of the year. And they also indicated that we needed to meet before the end of the year to meet our legislative requirements. So there are three municipal appointees currently on the board, and we do meet quorum with those three appointees. So our appointees representing Bayham and Malahide is Mayor Dominique Shiger from Malahide, and our appointee from Central Elgin is Mayor Andrew Sloan. And the community representative appointee from South Old Dutton-Dunwich and West Elgin is Ida McCallum. So at that first meeting, the board will need to make many important decisions about their budget and administration. So the board will need to prepare cost estimates for operational expenses and share those estimates with municipalities served by the detachment. In the case of a dispute, a municipality can request arbitration in writing, and that is to the Ontario Police Arbitration and Adjudication Commission. And one municipality can submit a request for arbitration in writing, or multiple municipalities can do that together. So the detachment board, according to the legislation, must hold at least four meetings per year. And the first meeting will involve appointing an administrator responsible for various tasks, including scheduling meetings, managing communication, and administering the Freedom of Information requests. Additionally, the board will require expertise in financial management and legal matters at the first few meetings to develop the necessary bylaws and policies, including terms of reference, procedural bylaws, travel conference attendance and expense policies, donation policies, et cetera. So financially and administratively, this transition presents some challenges. Under the new CSPA, the detachment board or the former Elgin Group Police Services Board can no longer apply for policing grants. So that was formerly the Police Services Board that applied for the grants. And those are grants such as the Ride Grant or the Community Safety and Policing Grant. Instead, the responsibility for applying to these grants now falls to the individual municipalities. And applying to these grants have some benefits because they may offer additional support for policing services in your community. So it's important that we appoint a lead municipality to handle these grant applications and the grant administration. We do, we are currently in the middle of one three-year grant. So the county applied on behalf of the Police Services Board, but we can no longer administer that grant, and a new lead will need to be appointed. So based on our discussions with local municipalities, the local municipal CAOs, they have expressed a preference for the county to take on this role. So today, I'm asking for your direction regarding whether or not the county is prepared to take on both the administration of the new detachment board and the responsibility for grant applications. And with that, I am happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you very much for that report, Carolyn. Open the floor up to questions. Counselor Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As you know, Elmer is in a kind of unique situation because we have our own police force. And the town of Elmer, of course, pays for that police force. And I really haven't looked at the financing of the OPP in the county very much at all. So excuse me if I ask you a lot of simple questions that everybody else knows. I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume, but I'm thinking that the county pays for the OPP, the Elgin OPP costs. And they don't do, yes, they do that, yeah.
At one time, and Jen can probably correct this, but there was an informal agreement whereby the county acted as the bill or the holding body, billed the individual municipalities, collected the fees and paid the OPP. But as I understand, there were never any formal agreements in place when they did this.
So there is no county levy in terms of paying for the OPP? Okay, that's fine. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, through you, Warden, to Carolyn. So Carolyn, we have, Elgin County has been administering it so far. If it weren't for the grants, it would just be business as usual. Is that correct?
So since it's a new board, the OPP detachment board, when they meet, they will need to hire an administrator, so to speak. And the board is now completely separate from the municipality. So the board will act as an independent body. And if they would like the county to continue acting as the administrator, then the county, along with the board, would have those conversations and negotiate an agreement.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, so I realize there's been some technical changes, and you've been good to explain them to the board and to others. But as of the administration, other than when it comes to actually what the county is, would be doing, the role of administration wouldn't change too much. What is, is that fair? Okay. And just secondly, I didn't understand when I started the board, if I may, that our local detachment head does not report to the board. And when Carolyn, we went to a conference, I found out that there's kind of two sets of police boards. Ones where we handle things like wages and all that kind of stuff, and others where we meet four times a year and for the most part are a bit of an advocacy group. Can you just comment on that in the sense of with these changes? I mean, I know we're not changing our roles, but the roles remain the same as just essentially governance? Is that fair?
Essentially, so the OPP detachment board gives civilians an opportunity to provide input into how policing is administered in their communities. So the OPP, the Commissioner, they set the strategy and the priorities and all of that. And so any sort of local priorities cannot be contrary to that. You can set local policies that, for example, may identify that outreach to youth is very important in your community. And then you can have discussions with your detachment commander so that they would make that a priority for the detachment as well. So you can provide some feedback and have conversations on how you would like to see policing presence in your community. You can't provide any direction, but it's a good opportunity to provide feedback. And it's also an opportunity for the OPP to provide updates on their activities in your community as well. And it keeps that conversation going.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Counselors here.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just a question, if the board were to request support from the county for a fee, is there the capacity at the county to provide that?
I'm going to let Blaine weigh in on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And my staff can throw things at me later. But given your question, Counselors Shiger and Counselor Sloan's, question, Counselors Giger and Counselor Sloan's comments about generally, the role would continue in a similar type of fashion, there would be, you know, some subtle differences, but we'd certainly look at managing it similar to any other committee or board. So, we would probably look at, and I would have discussions with Ms. Thompson with respect to the Administrative Services Department of the county, just assuming that as another committee or board that the county's involved in. So, yes, I, to answer your question, I don't believe it would be a large lift for the county. We would, you know, factor that in, but we would, between Catherine and I, we'd have a discussion about how we can factor that in, but I don't think it would be a large lift.
Okay. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess through you, Carolyn, there's gonna be some costs, or am I, any idea what that cost might be?
Certainly. So, at the first OPP detachment board meeting, we will start that conversation of getting those estimates to each municipality, so there are certainly some considerations. There is the administrator's salary, so to speak, so we would need to determine how many hours per year, and you can do that by the number of meetings and allocating, you know, a number of hours to get ready per meeting. And then, you would also think of things like financial administration, so there will need to be a treasurer and a bookkeeper for those costs. You'll need to think of IT costs, so agendas and minutes. So, agendas need to be posted seven days before meetings, minutes need to be publicly posted, so the detachment board would need to have access to a website somewhere and some IT support for that. And in addition to that, at the beginning, there may be some additional costs when we develop those policies because there would be additional time spent in drafting those things. But ongoing, it's the administration, IT, finances, and then you may need to put some in there for legal support from time to time should you ever need to reach out for, to legal counsel.
Okay. As a follow-up to that question from Counselor Widner, then to Director Ford, is there capacity within your shop to administer the grant side of it, or even act as treasurer for the OPP detachment board?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to council. We have done this in the past within our workload, so it is doable, I believe, in our shop, yes.
Okay. All right. And from an IT perspective, there's capacity there?
Yes.
Okay. Here's the question that I'm gonna throw out there. The county no longer plays the role that it used to play in terms of collecting the fees for police services and then remitting them through to the OPP, and I guess you wonder, and it's a local municipal responsibility, you're billed directly, is there a role for Elgin County then to play in the administrative side? If it's compensated, I would say, if it's recoverable, perhaps?
Yep. Counselor Sloan. Sorry. And I'll defer to the deputy warden, but I don't think that, I mean, we meet four times a year. It's not rigorous, if I may. It's, as I say, we don't deal with salaries, we don't deal with a lot of the nuts and bolts. The time I've spent has been, has been interesting to learn about the services they provide, but countywide, with the exception of our friends at Elmer, and I think there's a bit of if it ain't broke, don't fix it, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Deputy Warden Jones?
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's as much business as usual. I would hope that Elgin County and the municipalities do need our say at the table, at least when we don't like what's happening, and South Old has some stuff that's not acceptable at this point, we need our voice at that table. But as far as the finances go, I don't see any difference.
I was gonna suggest, though, just a little clarity for me. A say at the table, would that be through your representative at the Police Services Board, or are you saying a say at this table?
No, at the board.
Okay. I agree that that's the place for it. That's all I was wondering about, is there a capacity or is there interest at the council level for continuing on with the administration and the finance tracking, treasurer duties? Yep. Counselors here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. I mean, the bottom line, it's, ultimately, it's the board's decision. The board has to hire an administrator, and when I think of administrator, I'm including all aspects, so finance, IT, and so, I think today, we're just, so the county is just saying, in the event that the board asks, are we prepared? Do we have the capacity for fair compensations? I think that's the part that will be a little bit more explicitly recognized and formalized. So, but I think that's, that's basically all that's on the table today. It's an anticipation of perhaps being requested at the county to act as the overall administrator for the board.
Again, thank you for that. It's simply a case, that's what I was trying to get across to councils, they understand exactly the role. Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Counselor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have a question on the provincial appointees. Where do those names come from? Does the county or the board have any influence as far as putting names forward, or are we solely waiting for the provincial government on that?
Again, so through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Hens. So, before April 1st, the ministry did reach out to our provincial appointees, Trudy Canelis and David Jenkins, to ask if they would like to be reappointed to the new board. Both did respond and indicated that they would like to be reappointed. When I reached out, I learned that there is an application process, so regardless of the earlier outreach, those interested in being an appointee need to follow that process. They need to apply. There is a portal on the provincial website where all interested candidates can apply, and they review those candidates and then select their two appointees.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question, the costing, is it being borne by the county then, or will it be built back to the neighboring municipalities that use the service?
That will be determined by the OPP board, detachment board, I would assume.
Just to clarify, the, I think what county council is considering is being the administrator for a fee, which will be paid by the board, but the participating municipalities will pay the board, the board will pay the county, is what is being considered.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none. Catherine, let's have the motion, please.
Resolved that the report titled Community Safety and Policing Act OPP Detachment Board Transition from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives dated September 24th, 2024 be received and filed, and that council direct staff to assist the Elgin OPP detachment board in holding its inaugural meeting, and that council direct staff to identify to the Elgin OPP detachment board that the county is prepared to provide ongoing administrative assistance to the board, and if the offer is accepted by the board, to negotiate terms and conditions for such assistance to be presented for council's consideration at a later date.
Okay. Having heard the motion, do we have a mover and second? Counselor Giger will move. Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to Section 66, from the Director of Financial Services, the Treasurer, ambulance vehicle replacements for 2025 and 2026, sole source. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning. Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. We are bringing forward this report again to ask for the ability to sole source the ambulances for the purchases of the 2025-2026 year. Crestline is still the only provider and the only certified provider for us, and therefore, for our Type III ambulances, and therefore, we're going to require that we sole source from them. One of the added things in this report is that in the past, Crestline had provided the Stryker equipment that was within the ambulance, which is the power lifts and the stretchers and the stair chairs. However, they are requesting now that we do that ourselves, so we will also have to sole source those from Stryker Canada for 2025-2026. Additionally, the financial implication on this is that the sole sourcing is also causing a bit of a backlog, and so, we have to pay for it now, and we won't get it until 2026. So, there's a lot of lag time, almost 18 months of lag time. If we don't pay for some of this in advance, they will not secure our position, so we will not get the ambulances as we require them. One of the additional things that has happened recently is that we lost one of our new ambulances that we just delivered, ambulance 241043. We've been told that currently, the insurance provider is saying that's going to be a complete loss, and we will have to order another one, so there will be a little bit of lag time on that. Additionally, we don't know when we will be able to get that, but it's supposed to be fully insured, so while we're waiting to find out what the actual amount is that we will get from that insurance in order to provide us with a new one. In that, in that lag time, though, we do have some challenges because we are down one ambulance, so we do have some additional spares in the ambulance fleet that they're using, but that's causing some issue with staffing because there's, it's not staffing specifically, but when they do the shift turnover, so if someone is stuck at a hospital, they won't be able to go out on shift until that ambulance comes back in. So, that's sort of why we have the additional items on, in play. So, we're just waiting for the insurance report on that. So, if there's any further questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that report, Jen. I assume to replace the ambulance that's been through the accident is still going to require a two-year lag in order to get it.
Correct.
Yeah. Counselor Sloan.
Thank you through you, Warden, and just to clarify, a two-year lag, depending on whether you're looking for a made-to-order custom unit, Crestline, as I believe, sells demonstrators and used vehicles as well, but a couple of questions about this report. Can I ask if the quote in here about the federal government intending to apply a 25% surtax on imports of steel, did that come from Crestline?
I believe that it did. This was Mike Hugstra, our purchasing coordinator, who was working with Crestline in order to get the quote together. So, this quote that you have before you is not going to be probably the actual quote. We can't actually get them to give us the amount that we will be paying when the ambulance is delivered. So, there won't be, they're not giving us a firm quote if this is a quote that, based on the fact that they are sole sourcing.
So, follow-up. So, just because of a bit of a history here with respect to the steel industry, which I was involved in, so the vehicle in question is made in Wentzville, Missouri. General Motors uses 90% North American steel. There's no Chinese steel in it, other than some components which might come from whatever. I don't like it when, we understand the need for good equipment, we want our families to be safe, but in a report, when it is implied through a private company that's in this to make profit, they're not in it to save people's lives, that there's some question, which is erroneous, about a steel or aluminum tariff, I think it takes away from the report respectfully. The second piece I wanted to ask the treasurer was, if we separate the actual vehicle, which is fine, and whether they, the two years works, the Stryker power load system, that's at a cost of $141,000. Is that mandated by the province?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. It is best practice, and it is in all of our other ambulances. It's there for health and safety and for WSIB because of the lifting of the patients. So, it does lift the stretcher up into the ambulance, which takes a lot of effort manually, and also for paramedicine, health and safety.
Thank you. Thanks, Warden.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. Are we able to take the Stryker power lifter system out of the damaged unit and the chairlift? Because I'm guessing if they're rating off the vehicle, they're probably not rating off that equipment unless there's an issue with that equipment because of the accident.
Okay. Recognizing it's one vehicle, yeah. Jen?
The insurance has written the vehicle off, so we can investigate that, but from my understanding, they feel that's a risk to patients going, so they want to have a vehicle that's all-inclusive so that they can provide the best vehicle, since the vehicle was brand-new.
Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. So, we just have to make sure when they're replacing that ambulance for, say, the $240,000, that they're also including the extra $75,000 for those two pieces of equipment, and that they don't separate that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Ms. Ford. The, I really don't like sole sourcing, but I realize at this time, we don't have any choices, but I don't like it at all. I know in Malahide, we just put a tender out for trucks, we got 15 back, which was nice to see. But I did a quick search of these prices in the US. Our neighbors aren't paying much more than we are, or maybe less, so I don't know. I just don't like the whole deal. And they write about this deal. I don't know what Chinese deal or whatever's got to do with this anyway. Can't we get it from wherever? Just a second question, do we have full replacement cost with our insurance?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner. The insurance is with the provider, so Medavi has the insurance, we don't hold the insurance, so we're working with Medavi in order to get that, those funds back.
Hopefully, they have full replacement cost. Be nice to know that.
Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. And the unit that was damaged, the unit that that replaced, is that still around? Are we able to use that? Or, and if it was sold, what was, how much value do we get for that?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. We do, we just sold that vehicle prior to the accident occurring, so it was an unfortunate timing issue for us. We would have been able to reuse that vehicle, and we sold two at the time, so we got around $50,000 for those two vehicles, so we would be able to utilize those funds in order to, like, look for a replacement if that's what works for Medavi.
Carry on, Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. Just to clarify, $50,000 each?
No, $50,000 in total.
Through you, Warden. And just, just a follow-up, did those units have the Stryker power loading system and the Stryker chairlift included with them?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I do not believe they did. We have two more vehicles in the fleet that do not have the Stryker lifts. We're putting them in as we get new vehicles, so.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Let's move with a motion and see where it goes.
Resolved that the report titled Ambulance Vehicle Replacements for 2025 and 2026 Sole Source from the Manager of Procurement and Risk and Director of Financial Services Treasurer dated September 24th, 2024 be received and filed, and that the Manager of Procurement and Risk be authorized to issue a purchase order to Crestline Coach Limited for two ambulances at the estimated price of $478,046 plus applicable taxes to be included in the 2025 capital budget, and that the Manager of Procurement and Risk be authorized to issue a purchase order to Stryker Canada for two Stryker power load systems, two Power Pro stretchers, and two stair chairs to be purchased in 2025 at the estimated price of $152,890 plus applicable taxes to be included in the 2025 capital budget, and that staff be authorized to purchase two ambulances from Crestline Coach Limited and associate and associated power load equipment from Stryker Canada to be included in the twenty twenty-six capital budget and that staff determine the number of ambulances to be declared surplus in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six once operational needs are identified and that disposal be done in accordance with the asset disposal policy.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Widner moves, Deputy uh Warden Jones seconds. Just to clarify, Jen, the report suggests you have to uh come up with a thirty percent deposit. You don't have to pay for them all upfront.
So is it, if the deposits do, how could you give a deposit not knowing the ultimate cost?
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Warden, we're giving a deposit based on the price that it is now.
Yeah. It'd be nice if they give you a guarantee.
We are hopeful that it will not increase significantly.
Okay. All right, having the motion before you, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it is carried. Thank you. Six, seven, uh Director of Financial Services, the Treasurer, the twenty twenty-four second quarter financial review. Jen, please.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Um before you use the Q two financial review for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, um council approved the twenty twenty-four budget and staff operational budget plans that align with their strategic priorities for the twenty twenty-four budget year. And this report is just to provide information related to the performance of budget to actuals up to the end of June twenty twenty-four. The budget to actual shows favorable performance at the end of Q two in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. The chart below shows a summary of costs that confirms surplus or deficit from each department. The budget and actuals displayed include include performance both on the operating and capital sides of the budget as a summarized amount. And the performance is additionally shown as a percentage of budget to easily identify significant variances. Where the percentage of variances plus or minus ten percent, a brief explanation's been provided as to the reason for that positive or negative performance. Appendix A includes an outline of each department budget in a more detailed uh format in order to supplement this report for any further information that you require. Funding received by the county that is unspent at year end must either be carried forward to spend in the next fiscal year or returned to the appropriate ministry funding partner. Some of the highlights are uh the Police Services Board. We do have a provincial grant, uh we actually have two there that are being held as we uh finalize the police board authorizations. And um once these are done, we'll either be administering them or we will be returning them to the ministry for uh to further clarify on us before year end. Uh Human Resources, there are some savings in wages due to a vacant position that is now filled. Under the Homes, uh Nursing and Personal Care, we have positive performance in performance and revenue and wages. And the actual per diem rate received was slightly higher than we conservatively budgeted. On the provincial target of three point seven hours of care as of April twenty twenty-four was met with the budget set and it's incre- it's going to incrementally increase in the later periods in order to meet the required provincial target of four hours of care by March twenty twenty-five. Performance is not expected to continue throughout the year as we near year end. And one of the fine, one of the pressures that we have in this de- in this department is that the union arbitration is still pending and this may have some additional effects on the uh performance, once that's known. Uh Program and Support Department, we have negative performance in hairdressing recoveries and positive performance in wages due to periods of vacancy in that department. Elgin Manor Building and Property, uh we had some savings in wages due to a vacancy and savings in purchase services at the end of Q two. Provincial Offenses and Collections Departments are combined, so the revenue's a bit lower than budgeted with some offset savings in wages and benefits, legal, purchase services and miscellaneous. Emergency Measures, um we're showing the Oil and Gas Well Grant Revenue that was received with outstanding applicable offsetting costs um in progress at the end of June. And this grant was, will be completed by year end and performance will be removed or returned to the ministry. Under Land Division and Planning, they do share a position, so there is wage performance in both of those departments as a result of a position vacancy. As far as the Provincial Offenses, uh payments will be made to the local municipal partners at the end of the year as requested last year in the twenty twenty-three uh during twenty twenty-three from the Treasurer's Group. Um in conclusion, the positive performance outlined at the end of Q two is conservatively identifying areas where we will expect further spending on grant funds in our possession as well as areas where positive performance was derived from vacancies or savings. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this report.
Thank you very much, Jen. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Sloan.
Thank you through you, Warden. I'm looking at the department by department where there's staffing vacancy surplus, but I'd like to know what the surplus is overall. I can't seem to find the number. Thank you.
Jen, do you have that number?
Are are we just talking about wages or are we talking about the overall surplus? Because it's seven hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay, so from, we've got department by department where there's a surplus. What's the surplus overall for staffing vacancies?
I don't have that number handy, sorry.
Okay. Could you get that for us uh for future?
Okay, so if I may follow up, um do you look at trends, Ms. Ford, when you're looking at your financial statements? Like if we're seven hundred thousand dollars or seven eighty-eight above right now, um do you look at any kind of a trend analysis when you're, when you're, when you're looking at your numbers through you, Warden?
And throughout the year, we do have trends as far as when things are paid and when they are not paid. However, when it comes to funding, those are things that we can't um determine throughout the year and they're not something that is a trend. Also, wage performance, um vacancies come and go, so that is not also something that we can count on throughout the year.
Thank you. So with respect to of of trend analysis um and data-driven decisions, it it's to me uh something important to look into, but moving on, what was the surplus for twenty twenty-three, please?
We're currently uh working with the auditors and that is forthcoming. When we get that number completed, we'll let um council know. Uh currently, that can be uh subject to change. So in order to ensure that I'm not circumventing the audit process, um I would like to defer that question.
Okay, Counselor Sloan.
Just a follow-up, if you take the numbers as you provided to us today in your reports in twenty twenty-three, or sorry, in, yeah, in twenty twenty-three with the the quarterly reports, what would the surplus be that you provided to the auditors? You you provided statements to the auditors, which they look at, but they would have had a surplus on them. We can't run a deficit. Um you you've given us the quarterly surpluses for this year, but we're still waiting for them for last year. So you have an idea, you provided a document to the auditors. Uh and I'd just like to know what that surplus is to be added to this amount. Thank you, Warden.
To be added to this amount? I don't.
Okay, so you've given us the surplus for two, for the quarters in twenty twenty-four. You provided these same documents to council for twenty twenty-three. There's a surplus at the end of the year. What is your surplus number that was given to the auditors for twenty twenty-three, please?
Okay, um I'm gonna interject here a little bit, but I think uh there's a little miscon- or a little confusion here. We're talking about performance. It may appear as a surplus, but some of these things have already been allocated, just haven't been expended yet.
Understood, but we provided the auditors with a number and there's a surplus number that was provided, I would take it. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. We do have a surplus. At this time, we're still in the we're still working through that information with the auditor to make sure that the number is secure so that I can bring it forward as an actual number that we're going to put into reserve or whatever.
Okay, so the number that was given to the auditor, we're not, yeah, but if we take right now, maybe I could ask you this. For the seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, would it be fair to say that that i- if this trend continues, that we'd be looking at a surplus of approximately two mi- two point eight million for twenty twenty-four? Have you looked at what you think the surplus would be for twenty twenty-four?
Uh through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. Um at seven hundred thousand, this is only, this is a half-year requirement, so it would be like one point four, I guess, if that's what you're looking at. I can't determine or predict what the year-end surplus will be.
And just finally, through you, Warden, so you don't have any, you don't have any uh estimate for what you think you're you're looking at for two thousand and twenty-four? And the number that you gave for twenty twenty-three to the auditors, we're not going to get, I just want to confirm that.
We'll bring that forward when year-end is completed so that we have the number stable, so that we, at this time, it's still subject to change. So at uh for year-end, so and again, this is a a prediction for just what we are at at the end of the Q two. So at the end of the year, Q four, it could be much different in twenty twenty-four, so.
Thanks to you, Warden.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled twenty twenty-four Quarter Two Financial Review from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four be received and filed.
Do we have a mover, seconder, please? Counselor Hansen, Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Moving on to section seven, Council Correspondence, seven point one items for consideration. And seven one one is the letter from Amy Martin, the Chairperson of the South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation, uh requesting support for a resolution for continued transit funding. The resolution is before you. Are there any concerns or questions regarding that? And I believe that uh Chairperson Martin during her presentation this morning mentioned that this was coming forward, something requesting support from across the region. Counselor Crockett, uh hand was up, was that uh willing to?
Just a comment.
Please.
I can't see why we wouldn't support this, seeing the importance to Elgin County.
I think so. And uh as we move forward through our Transportation Master Plan and justification for a uh hopefully will be revealed through that plan. And I think it's timely that we join the family, so to speak. But anyway, if there are no concerns, I'd be looking for a mover and seconder for that resolution. Counselor Crockett will move, Counselor Noble will second. You want to read it?
Whereas the County of Brant, Middlesex County, Municipality of Strathroy Karadoc, Norfolk County, Town of Tilsenberg, Municipality of East Zora Tavistock, Gray County, Perth County, City of Stratford, Municipality of Lampton Shores and Wellington County have successfully utilized government funding to create and sustain local community transit through Southwest Community Transit. And whereas eighty-five thousand riders have utilized the Southwest Community Transit Services in the first half of twenty twenty-four alone, demonstrating significant community reliance on these services. And whereas the economic impact of this transit system is estimated to be seven hundred and forty-eight million dollars, eight hundred thou- or sorry, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand eight I am not saying this correctly.
Forty-eight million.
Seven hundred and forty-eight million, eight hundred thousand dollars annually, largely due to its role in providing transportation to employment opportunities. And whereas the current funding for this critical small urban and rural intercommunity transit service is set to expire in March twenty twenty-five, putting the sustainability of this service at risk. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin urges the provincial government to continue funding Southwest Community Transit beyond March twenty twenty-five to ensure the ongoing viability of this essential service for small urban and rural Ontario. Be it further resolved that this resolution be circulated to the County of Brant, Middlesex County, Norfolk County, Oxford County, Municipality of Strathroy Karadoc, Town of Tilsenberg, Municipality of East Zora Tavistock, Perth County, City of Stratford, Municipality of Lampton Shores, Wellington County, Bruce County, Municipality of Bayham, Municipality of Thames Centre and other relevant stakeholders for their support and advocacy.
Okay, having heard the uh motion, all in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Seven point two items for information, the consent agenda. We have letters from seven point two point one from the Ministry of Transportation regarding the County of Elgin's delegation at the twenty twenty-four AMO Conference. Seven two two, letter from Oxford County Chief Administrative Officer providing notice of Oxford County's intention to resign from the South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation. And seven two three, letter from the Town of Elmer, Mayor Jack Crockett, regarding centralized planning services at the County of Elgin. Does anyone have any comments they wish to offer on any of the items on the consent agenda? Uh Counselor Crockett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just a, just a brief comment. Obviously, this uh this letter is a result of the last meeting's uh, I guess, request by council that the local municipalities take a look at the planning document and uh have comments on them. Uh I think most of this, most of these items were discussed at the at the last meeting, except perhaps for the number four, which deals with taking another look at at the actual needs of the number of planners that are kind of forecast. So um I I would hope that uh that council takes a look at those comments uh and uh when we bring forward a new uh proposal, I guess, a new planning document to take a look at those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Okay. At the risk of drawing attention to it, seven two two, I'm going to speak to that for a bit. Uh to say that I'm a little incensed with the circulation is uh, yeah, minimizing that. The point is, this was a, should have been circulated to the scoreboard first for consideration, then moved forward. But the broad circulation out there amongst not all just municipal partners, but how it extends out into uh ministry officials and funding agencies, puts some of this programming and program funding streams at risk because there's a a question at the ministry level of instability going on within the score region. So I'm not happy with how this happened. I would rather they have came to the score and talked to us directly, but they didn't. This is just another example, I'm sorry to say, of out-of-step process from Oxford. That's my comment. Does anyone, okay, final say on anything with regards to correspondence? All right, motion to receive.
Resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one to seven point two point three be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Widner. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Section eight, other business, uh do we have any statements or inquiries by members? Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to take a minute to once again thank all my uh fellow uh council members for participating in the Terrace Lodge Charity Bowling Tournament. I think it was a lot of fun. It was for a good cause and uh as I mentioned on Saturday, um I know it it was a lot of work and and uh everybody's really busy, but we really needed this for the end of the campaign. We needed your support around this horseshoe to demonstrate to the community and the committee and the staff um that this, this has been a a really important initiative and we needed your help to get us to um that finish line. So thank you for participating. And uh it looks like we are, uh we have raised about fourteen thousand dollars just with that event and we will successfully cross that finish line. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome and thank you. Counselor Crockett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Just to uh follow up from Counselor Shiger's uh report, uh the Town of Elmer raised the Town of Elmer raised the most funds, and I would just like to publicly thank Counselor Chapman for leading that, leading that fundraising.
Absolutely. Any other statements? Okay. Is there, are there any notices of motion? Or matters of urgency? That brings us to closed meeting items.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239.2. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, September 10, 2024. Closed meeting item number two, lease renewals, county administration building. Under Section C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Shiger and Counselor Crockett will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan and Counselor Noble, all in favor? That is carried. Closed meeting item number one.
Resolved that the September 10, 2024 closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Sloan, Counselor, excuse me, Deputy Warden Jones, all in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number two.
Resolved that the confidential report titled Lease Renewals, County Administration Building from the Manager of Corporate Facilities dated September 24, 2024 be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council approve a new commercial one-year term lease agreement between Carol Hawthorne and Elgin County in relation to Suite 345-1 commencing May 1, 2024, and that Elgin County Council approve a new commercial two-year term lease agreement between All-Timer Society Elgin St. Thomas and Elgin County in relation to Suites 229, 232, and 237-1, and Storage Room 344 commencing May 1, 2024, and that Elgin County Council approve a new commercial two-year lease agreement between 1342961 Ontario Incorporated, John Hogan Law Office, and Elgin County in relation to Suite 313 commencing May 1, 2024, and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to execute these agreements.
All right. Same one interested in moving and seconding that. Counselor Widner will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That is carried. Motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Noble, Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That's carried. And consideration of the bylaws.
Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the September 24, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 2434 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Latham and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That is carried. The adjournment motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 11:18 a.m. to meet again on October 8, 2024 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Moved by Counselor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Crockett. All in favor? That is carried. And thank you very much for joining us this morning. Have a great day.